Evening, sorry for the delay. It is 7:08. I will call the February first meeting of Pembroke School Committee to order. Couple things, just the meeting is recorded mainly for minutes and everybody sees it posted within this time, it should be within 24 hours. Thanks PAC TV for working through a technical issue tonight, but they posted the meeting as well as we posted on our page within you 24 hours or so. We do have an adjustment to the agenda, an executive session on collective bargaining which will be added to the end. We'll kind of bounce around a little bit and we'll start with budget presentations. Mrs. Shabman's up first with-
Ms. Chapman.
I'm sorry. I know. Sorry.
That's okay.
Mrs. Shabman, first I'm meeting my thing, right? Who is presenting visual and performing arts?
Good evening, everybody. I'm so pleased to be here on behalf of the music and the art teachers to talk about everything VPA. So our overview tonight, we'll go over our current department goals, the current staffing, student enrollment in grades five and six instrumental music, the VPA class enrollment in grades seven through 12, our budget moving, rolling everything over from what we're currently doing this year at next year's prices, and then some new budget request priorities and our next steps. So our goals for improvement of achievement for all students is always ongoing and we really strive to continue to provide the most outstanding artistic and musical opportunities that we can for our students. I'm very pleased to tell a couple of special things that happened outside of the classroom. We had three students' work being accepted to the Emerging Young Artist Exhibit at UMass Dartmouth. We've had a student, a freshman student have her work accepted to the Davis publication. We just got word at about 5:30 that four of our students have been accepted to the Massachusetts All-State Chorus for this coming spring. We've had students accepted into junior district, senior district. We have SEMSBA auditions coming up this Saturday, of which we're sending students from the middle school and the high school to audition for, and also planning for all of the art shows that will happen in the spring. Ongoing, we are supporting and developing excellent instruction. We continue to refine our best practices. We are forever updating and complying and pivoting to stay abreast of all the changes with the COVID and all the protocols and mandates on that front. And we also, with the help of our wonderful technology department, really expanded, of course, last year, the use of technology, which we are continuing to weave into our classroom as we've returned to full in-person learning. We are ongoing and it will probably take us another couple, I hope we'll have this done by next fall, but we're continuing to align all of the curriculum in the visual and performing arts department to the new updated mass state frameworks, including the media arts, which is a new strand. And then something kind of new we've been talking about in the department, of course, with the onset of COVID and us having not opportunity to provide the same kind of in-person instruction where we had the cohorts and we didn't offer sixth grade chorus for a year. And we are thinking about new ways that we can recruit and retain our students, especially in the string and the choral program. You know, we lost our favorite world tour where we go around to the elementary schools. You know, it just wasn't appropriate to do that this year. And, you know, we're very excited to present the all-town concerts, but those are big recruitment moments for us in the music department, being a total elective department where students choose to be a member of that, grades five through 12. So, you know, we're putting on our creative hats and doing everything we can to make sure that we're reaching all those students that may be interested in joining our program. So our current staffing is that we have 14.2 total music and art teachers throughout our district. You can see the, how it lays out there. So the 1.2 at the middle school is, point two is the chorus and orchestra that happens during Titan Time, and then our band teacher who also does the music classes during the orbit is the full-time person. And then a three visual, and the 1.8 is a full-time staff member, and then myself who teaches point four at the high school, and our string teacher who also does piano lab, who does point four as well at the high school. This is our current elementary instrumental enrollment. I like to give you a three-year picture on how this looks. So you can see pre-COVID, we were at about 262. And then last year, that number dropped to 157. And this year, we're climbing up a little bit more, 168. And one of the reasons we felt that last year, you know, there was some trepidation from some families and students regarding what would it look like, was it safe and all of that. So we worked really hard this year to include sixth graders starting, which we don't traditionally do, that might have missed out in fifth grade and starting and felt a little bit more comfortable at this point in this juncture to begin. So we really looked at the schedule and how could we support also starting sixth grade beginners. So we did capture some students that did not start in fifth grade, so we were really pleased about that, that we were able to have some sixth graders join us this year as beginners. This is the VPA class enrollment. Thanks to the wonderful Erin Tinker for pulling all of this data together for me. So you can see that 82% of students in the middle school are part of the art program. 77% are part of the music program. That includes the orbits plus chorus, band, and strings. Up at the high school, where it also is a total elective, and I think we're competing with a lot of incredible electives that are offered through every department in our high school. We have 42% involved in the art program and 21% involved in the music program. And you might be saying, how could someone take seven music classes? There is a person down there, seven. So we do have a student that's going to look on to go into music education, and that student avails themselves of every elective that we offer, plus takes their required math and English. But they're really, they're really on that music track. So that person is getting everything they can out of the music department. So cost to preserving our program. So this is everything we're currently doing and rolling it forward next, at next year's prices. So this is kind of the breakdown. The bulk of our expenses comes under instructional materials and supplies, especially thinking about the visual arts and everything being consumable. So once we use up, you know, all those supplies for all of their lessons, we have to buy them again. Contracted services in there for school-owned instruments, we do have a number of those and we keep them in very good working order. They are lent it out regularly to families that may not be able to afford to rent an instrument at the fifth and sixth grade level. And then as students, a lot of people don't know this, but as students enter seventh grade and up, the band teachers are looking to supplement beyond what those beginning instruments are. We're looking for bassoon players and French horn players and euphonium players and bass clarinet players and baritone and tenor sax. So we have a number of school, those instruments can be rather pricey, and we've had wonderful support to kind of build up a collection of those so we can put an instrument right in a student's hand that they will then rent or will loan out to them free of charge for the whole time that they're in our public school system. So that instrument kind of travels with them as they, as they come up. So that's a wonderful thing. Our teachers do belong to professional organizations for our students to do a lot of the competitions and district SEMSBA, MasQ things. We need our teachers to be members of that in order to submit materials for juried art shows and for music competitions. Our instructional technology, we continue to use. We did have, unfortunately, our wonderful Klavanova, the digital piano that we've had for 17 years in the choir room, has, she's gone. She won't turn on anymore. So she's, she's served us well. So we, we have a digital instrument that we took from the band room. We have, we have one or two. So we're not without an instrument, but I was able to work with Falsetti Pianos is the New England rep for. They're the only people that sell Klavanovas. And it's really, I did a lot of research before we bought one, and obviously, we had an instrument that lasts 17 years. They're, they're pretty great and they sound wonderful. So they've agreed to give us a loner instrument for a very small, just a delivery charge. It's really nice when you have people that you know and you can call. So that we, we will get an instrument on Tuesday that we'll be able to use for the remainder of the year, but we do need to look to replace that instrument. So that's why that number's a little bit bigger. And I, I'd like to have it on the agenda. Our kilns are getting a little older, and so I do want to look to replace, it would be great to replace one a year in every building. And they run anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000, depending on the model. We do like the top loader ones are easier to utilize. And then district-wide transportation to send all of our kids to our music festivals and parades, et cetera. So that comes down to 90. And then as far as priority budget requests, I would really like to see a point six restored in the music department. That would be 50% of what the, what the cut was a couple of years ago. I would like to see a point two come back at the high school, which will allow us to run more of our hands-on electives for, especially to reach those students that might not be interested in a performing ensemble. And then a point four at the middle school. We had a great, we have a great plan. We had a great plan. And then COVID, of course, kind of changed what that looked like a little bit. So currently, the strings and the orchestra are done during Titan Time. It seemed to be great at the beginning of the year. As academics got a little harder and it got away from just review and, but really introducing new material, it's been challenging for students, I think, especially the seventh graders feel they don't want to miss Titan Time. They really like that academic support. So I would like to see if there was a way, and I've had good conversations with Donna McGaragall about this too, about restoring chorus and orchestra. So the model looks the same as band, and it's during the school day and students are signing up for that. And it's not, it doesn't have to be done at the same time as Titan Time. So I would love to see that happen. And then to replace the Klavanova, we got, we got a wonderful quote. So the list price is between 11,000 and 12,000, and we got a good quote that came in just under 7,000. So that would be 52,000 on top of everything else that we'd love, we'd love to do. But I know I speak for all the music and arts teachers who are saying just how much we appreciate all the support that we always receive. We're very proud of the programs that we're able to offer, the quality experiences that the students at Pembroke get, and the breadth of the program that, that we can offer, and that, and that's done with, with your support. So we thank you very much. And next steps. So we'll continue everything that we're doing. We do always, you know, look for those gaps in our curriculum. We're, we're in somewhat ways fortunate that a lot of students that are with us, we have them for many years. So, you know, at the elementary level, they could be teaching, you know, a child for seven years technically through kindergarten through sixth grade. So we really know where, what wasn't able to get covered and where those gaps are. So I think we're, we were uniquely poised to figure that out quickly. And then again, you know, what can we do? What can we do to attract and recruit and retain students to our programs? We continue to embed social emotional learning competencies in the arts curriculum. That kind of goes hand in hand for what we do. And we continue to seek and apply out for grants. I wasn't successful this year, but we have gotten grants, many grants in the past. Music Drives Us, and we've done MasQ grants and, and things to really help to supplement our program, as well as the work that our wonderful parents group does, the Pembroke Association for the Performing Arts. They, they really do a lot behind the scenes too, to help us with some of those big expenditures that are, you know, one-time things that are, that, it helps us tremendously in our program. So I'm happy to answer. Any questions that you may have?
Go ahead, you go first. So the world tour, is it possible now that we're changing this test and stay program, is it possible now to do, or is it just too late to plan?
It's not too late to plan. I, we would always, we would love to do it. So the kids have been asking, is it going to be possible? I think it would be, I think it would be up to, you know, Erin to decide, can, can we, we are moving forward with the all-town concerts, so it's probably a similar thing. We, you know, we do bring together all, all the children in the elementary school into the gymnasium and then bring three groups, you know, a band, a chorus, and an orchestra to perform with them. But if we got the go-ahead, we would, we would make that work.
Yeah, we can look at it. I mean, traditionally, it happens the day or two before winter break, which is a instructional downtime in some of our elementary schools. So we'd have to look at where it could fit in.
Right, yeah. We're coming into testing time, so that, that makes it a little bit tricky. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm wondering, is there even an alternate time to do it this year because we're planning it later? I just, you know.
Even like a spring outdoor kind of thing, like, do you-
Well, we don't need to because of the test and stay.
Yeah.
Now we don't have the-
Yeah, so we're not contact tracing, so there's no close contacts. But for, for me, it's just a logistical calendar piece right now.
Right.
It does nothing to do, do with COVID for my-
That's right.
It's just about where would it fit in the calendar. You're talking about pulling kids from the high school. It ends up being the whole day for them.
It does.
And traveling around to elementary schools. And our MCAS Math and ELE windows are about to start opening in March, so.
Yeah. And the high school students, you know, their AP testing is coming up and, yeah, it just, it just makes it a little tricky.
Those few days before winter break.
I know.
But we can absolutely look at and see if there's any alternatives on the calendar.
Could you potentially put it in before the, right before the seniors' last day? Or right after the seniors' last day?
Right, right. Yeah, we can look.
Yeah, a few months to plan.
Yeah. I was just thinking, cause like, I mean, COVID has really hit the program. You know, I mean, it's the, it would probably would have worked had COVID not come into play. But I know even with my daughter, she didn't want to give up Titan Time. And to not have, like, you know, back in the day when Zach was there, it was like a big chorus, and then they did the after-school acapella club, and then the musical, everything. But like, most of Taye's friends don't want to give up Titan Time. They need that extra instruction. They need to be able to talk to their teachers. It's, it's so important. So there really is no opportunity for them to have chor- like, I would like to see chorus at the high school, at the middle school also, but that's just me. But, um, you know, I just think it's really important to engage the younger kids so that they know what they're missing. I come from an art therapy kind of background, because that's what I went to school for, was art therapy. So for me, like, watching how much emotional toll is taken on all of these kids through COVID, I feel like art and music is so important right now to, it just have an outlet other than, I mean, they don't have outlets. They need, they don't know yet that they need the outlet. So, you know, it would be really great if we could encourage, have the older kids encourage the younger kids somehow.
Right. And the shift from an elective model to an orbit model was a really great plan three years ago, right?
Yeah.
Right, exactly. It did.
It also gets wider exposure to the program. So, you know, I think you, 77% of kids are in music.
That's right.
That wasn't the case when it was either take chorus or band or-
Right.
Not take any music. So there's wider exposure. There just doesn't seem to be the deepening of knowledge, right? There's no ability for kids unless they want to get up, give up their Titan Time. So we can work with Donna and see if there's something we can do. But, you know, as far as running an efficient schedule, the orbits is the most efficient way to run the middle school schedule, and we've been getting at schedule efficiency now.
Right.
This is my 12th year. We've been trying to balance class sizes into all of that. So, you know, there's definitely a level of choice that you give up to run an orbit. So, you know, we no longer have computer science as standalone electives for kids at the middle school. It's encompassed in their STEM classes. So there's a lot of shifts that we made that year, you know, going back and building them back in one by one. I'm not sure it's possible with the schedule, but we can look at, you know, what, what we can do.
If we do, I'd like to then know what would go away.
Right.
It seems, it's a zero-sum game.
Right.
Because these students, if they're going to go into this elective-
Just seven periods.
Then we, then we need to make a cut, corresponding cut to another program that you would think is going to not sustain. Because unfortunately, we're not at the point where just adding a program and reducing the number of students in all, in an elective class, that's a luxury right now.
Yeah.
Right? Looking at a, at a million dollars before we even talk about adding a program. And the pathways is, gonna raise some questions. In fact, there's one for me in a second. But I, I don't, I think if we start going down that path, we have to think, what's the, what's the flip side?
Right. And you can't just introduce one or two electives into that schedule because students are ignorant. So it's like a-
Can I just ask a stupid, and I'm sure it's a stupid question.
No stupid question.
Just because I'm new, new to the committee, what did we take out that we now can't go back to the way it was?
So before students selected electives at the middle school, now every student goes through the four orbits over the course of a year. So they get STEM, they get music, they get art, they get PE and 21st Century Skills back up against each other. So students have to run through all of those. There's a series of electives in science, I believe too, and in social studies.
Social studies, yeah.
So there's six orbits that run at the middle school, and students make their way through those six orbits for a half of a term each year. If we go back to a model where they're selecting electives, it's just a less efficient way to run the schedule and there's less exposure to the program. So we sat down and figured out what are the, the core things that we want our middle schoolers to have. Obviously, PE is something that we don't have any say about. 21st Century Skills is a program that, you know, if you spend any time with Donna, you can in a minute understand the, the need for that, especially in a two-year middle school building. So the students are connected, so that's like their guidance curriculum. We talked about music and art being to distinct orbits so that students had exposure to those things and could go on to the high school to explore those interests in the more refined electives that we offer there. You know, with the schedule, we had some lower class sizes at the middle school than we've had in the past as enrollment kind of ebbs and flows. And so we had some opportunity with science and social studies teachers to offer an elective to students. So instead of saying, okay, you're a 1.0 science teacher, we're going to make you a point eight science teacher and hire a point two to do something else because that's not a great employment model. We, the teachers came up with a series of electives that they offer. And then the capacity that we have in Math and ELA is used for our math foundations and literacy workshops for kids. So kids that don't take a foreign language tend to take some of our supportive classes. So to add back in one elective or two electives, you actually have to go back to a full elective model. So those kids would be collecting, selecting computer science. There was a culinary arts elective that we had at one time. They'd be picking chorus, they'd be picking fundamentals of art, or I think there's another program that Melanie runs too. So they, they wouldn't-
Right.
Right. So they wouldn't have exposure to all of that. What we did was they, I believe, three years ago, it does seem like such a long time ago.
It does.
But I believe that the unit that, that Mr. Hovey goes through with kids is exposure to choral music, to instrumental music, to everything.
It is. It's like a survey course, right? Little bit of everything.
Little bit of everything as opposed to a, you know, finite scope.
Yeah. So does that get looked at again? Like, I mean, is, there's no, we're, we just aren't going to look at it, period?
Never again.
We're never looking. I just like, it, I don't know, like, I, I'm thinking about computer science and like-
Right. So the computer science core principles were built into the STEM orbit that all kids take, just like choral pieces and instrumental music pieces were built into the music orbit that all kids take. So we-
Which, which I understand that now, but what my point is, and I don't want to get too off topic, so, but my point is, is like, isn't that like, I mean, computer science is huge right now, and we're, they're only going to get that little piece of it.
But it's enough for them to then elect to take courses when they get to the high school, right? So it's, every kid at the middle school is exposed to computer science instead of the 42 kids that elected it before.
For two years, seventh grade, I think.
And it's great.
So it's a happier course, a larger group of course, which incorporates the science.
Right. And we, it's not, I mean, when, when we make, or you all make decisions at this level, it's not, that's not the NLLBL. Obviously, this, the group changes over and, you know, interests and goals change. But I will say, efficiency and scheduling is the easiest way to save money.
Right.
And as you build back in more student choice at the middle school in particular, just because it's not a drop schedule and because it's, you know, pretty-
Right. So we're-
Pretty written. There's just one period where kids-
We're trying to balance budget with-
Right, right.
And I, and I get that. I just wondered, is there another way to look at it? Because I feel like, based on what I'm seeing, I feel like a lot of kids are missing out on some things that they're getting, everybody's getting a little bit, but nobody's getting-
Nobody's getting to specialize in anything.
Yeah, exactly. And it's, and it's causing a drop-off, I think, of interest in really important things like computer science, you know what I mean? So, and art and music and-
Right. It's not necessarily a drop-off.
I don't think we're seeing drop-offs in computer science at high school, are we? We're seeing kids-
Well, my daughter is not, she's, I mean, she's very, I'm just going by what I'm seeing in my own family. And so, you know, I'm, I don't know if other people, what I'm hearing from other parents that are close to my family. So, and, you know, I feel like Taye doesn't have a lot of interest at all in computer science, but she's, yet she's very logically-minded and analytical and more, you know, sort of like a brother's, you know, I don't know. I'm just, it's just surprising to me, that's all, you know, I thought.
I'm trying to kind of follow, because I'm looking at your class enrollment in PCMS and PHS, and was looking at the percentages. So am I correct in understanding that because when we went to the orbit model, these percentages went up, there were-
Correct.
So if we were-
More-
Students are being exposed. So, and so it's kind of, I guess you'll hear me say, we only know what we know. So by doing that orbit model, the kids know a little bit more about what options they have? Where maybe before, when we were in that other model, maybe they, they saw it, but they didn't really understand it? Am I getting that right, do you think?
Well, I'm-
I mean, we're, we're exposing them to more, but I see what you're saying. They're not as an in-depth of a piece.
But then if you look at the high school, like, I'd be interested to see, like, yeah, I was, the 21%-
Your high, the high school numbers aren't that far off from where they have been in-
They're not.
They're not too bad.
So the 21, because that, that was the, the kind of the follow-up to it, because I was-
Right. Some of it is a function of class size, right? So our, even when you were showing the numbers for fifth and sixth grade, our bigger sixth grade moved on last year.
Right.
You know, if you were to take those numbers as a percentage of enrollment, it's pretty steady.
Yeah.
It's, it's not necessarily a big drop-off.
Is, is our senior classes one of the biggest classes at 1.2? At least I know when they came in kindergarten-
We're all right around 194, 201.
Yes.
The middle school is 202 and 214. So they're, they all hover right around 200.
To summarize what you said, we either just keep the orbits and give them a taste of many things, or we go to specialization at seventh and eighth grade. Is that ultimately what the choice is? Because you can't have a combination of the-
Right. So those are the black-
Right, so those are the black and white choices. If anyone here, Gwen is probably the most creative person at the table. And so there are other options, right? We can look at, you know, we added the string club at elementary when there was a need there. There's definitely a chorus piece we can do. We can look at Titan Time. So right now, Titan Time meets Monday and advisory and four days with teachers. Do we, you know, kids are pretty used to Titan Time now. Do we need the whole Monday to schedule? Can we look at, you know, creating some more time blocks within, within the day there?
And what about, because I know we talked about, we've got some first timers now in sixth grade, Gwen, for instruments and...
We do.
But, you know, we've always started in fifth.
Correct.
Would, would we have the option to start in fourth? You know, I'm just looking, going, okay, that's an extra year. I, I don't know.
So we did add the string unit in fourth grade.
So when we first, when I first came here in 2005, we were doing strings in fourth and band in five and six. So we had a completely different model. It was what we called the pull-out model. So students were getting pulled out of, could have been academic and it rotated so that they weren't... So years and years ago, we all put our heads together and said, how are we going to do this more efficient and better for teachers and students and teaching and learning? So we came to, because we have a teacher that travels, we did a set schedule for grade five and six in each building.
Yep.
So that students were being scheduled for instrumental music around their, their library or music, mostly they, it's maybe missing music for music. Instead of going to general music, they're going instrumental music class. So they're no longer missing chunks of academic work in, in the classroom. And that actually made everybody more happy. I think kids too, they didn't feel like, oh, I can't miss math today because I...
Thank you for this, kind of like a history lesson.
Yeah.
I, I arrived to terrorize everyone in Pembroke in 2009.
So we were...
Don't be always quiet.
Yeah, so we were already using that, which we found was so successful. Other districts asked us what we were doing. Because not to have that, the student missing an academic chunk and how is the classroom teacher going to, you know, catch up those three kids that had to go to saxophone and they missed their math lesson? And this just works really, really well for us and for, and for kids.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it works great. So I'm not sure, we would probably need additional staff if we were to offer, so...
Again, the process of everything.
Yeah.
So just was kind of curious and getting that background sample.
And there are some... They start strings in third and fourth grade, and strings and instruments just that much harder to learn. So it gives them a little bit of time. But that's why we also put in the fourth grade string unit. We did not do that last year during the COVID, but...
There was no sharing.
There was no sharing, yes. Because we have one classroom set that, that travels, so is used in each building. So North would do it in the fall and someone would do it in the winter and then it would go to Habermuk in the spring. So that's why we instituted that immersion program in the sixth grade, in the fourth grade unit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
I noticed a lot of sort of maintaining what we're doing. Any visions, any dreams of where you want to take it down the road, of where we could potentially go and things we can be thinking about for down the road?
Certainly with the digital art pathway, that's one of the places that we would like to see grow the most. I think for, that's going to be exciting. So we're really excited about that. As far as the music department goes, we have had some talk about looking at our music theory elective and weaving that into talking more, having it be music technology and theory, also building off of what Mr. Hovey does in, in the middle school level. To put in a full-blown music technology lab, you need about 200 grand to do that. But there are certainly ways that we can with the students having their own devices as well and all of the free programs that came out that we started to use. So we, Mr. Glass and I and Mr. Topics have been talking about, I think we need to rebrand and, and morph that class for student interest as well. Students are, are interested in that. They're interested in composing their own pieces and they're so quick at, at the software piece. So that's kind of probably what the next piece of the music department needs to be. And then continuing to grow the digital art pathway.
I also think that there's potential for visual and performing arts pathway down the road too. That's just going to take a little bit of thinking in terms of Gwen and I sitting down and seeing what we have already and what would we need to add and what would that cost be? Because we've got a lot of great stuff there.
We do.
Just have to make sure that it's, that it makes sense as a, as a pathway.
I'm glad you brought that up because I was actually going to ask about that and I forgot.
I think it's a potential. I didn't, I don't think we have, we're right there this year to do it, but I think that we can look at it further as we keep going through. And I think that one might be one that could easily, not easily, but it's one that we're close, we're closer on that one than we are on some of the other ones that would require a tremendous amount of professional development and capital expenditures.
So, so when you're back on the pathway that was presented and really approved, is any additional costs?
Yeah.
Proposals, where, where are we going to see that?
You'll see that in your budget, yeah.
Okay, because I was expecting to see it tonight. Can we just get an idea what that looks like?
I think in the digital arts fourth class, I think it was around $7,000 was...
That sounds about right.
There was no staffing?
No.
No.
There's no staffing, but there's a training component. And then there, for the certificates, there's going to be a cost for...
To be, yeah, we can become what's called a certiport training school where students can earn their certificate through us, but we have to send a teacher through that training program and then to apply to become a certiport training facility.
Okay.
So there is...
I'm just trying to get my arm around the ballpark for that, do you think?
I believe it was $7,000.
That was a $7,000? That's a $7,000.
Yeah.
Got it, okay. Is there any opportunity off of that to offer those same certificates to the public or other students?
Oh my gosh, you just took my question.
So, right, because we've, we've always talked about expanding, right? This has been around for a long time, expanding.
Adult men.
Yeah, thank you. Could we do...
It's worth looking at it. I don't know what the constraints are. Yeah, but I'd be happy to check it out.
If that people's trained and interested in doing it outside, is it something that we could do? Because then that becomes a revenue source to offset some of these other things.
That's interesting.
Because to me, if we were able to, if we were able to generate revenue for a subject area, to me, I would think you'd use that money back into that subject area.
Sure, that makes sense.
It doesn't have to.
I'm, I'm thinking that a lot of certificate program is online. If I'm, Brandon probably is nodding, so I'm on the right track. So a lot of that would be online. So it's, there's potential that we could open up that program to members of the community and that they would, they would pay in a different way. Because if you're doing something online, you're doing it independently. The, the beauty for our kids is they'd be doing it with a certified teacher who can help them with it.
That's right.
At school. But for adults that want to pursue that as a path, it might, might work.
So some of the, some of the data coming out from the great resignation is not just people going to the sidelines. Some is career changes.
Right.
And this could be an opportunity to capitalize what we've invested elsewhere. Not something to come back, but I'm just thinking, as we talk about some of these other expenses, because I do have a couple of expense questions, is it something where we say, okay, we can offset X because we're doing Y? It's just a thought.
Yeah. Again, I, I'd have to really explore those. I don't know how those certificate programs work. You know, I don't know, I don't know if they cap numbers. I don't know, I don't know what that looks like.
Yeah.
It's certainly something we can figure out.
Can I ask a quick kiln question? Every time you bring it up, I ask it. It's sad that I can't get away from kilns 25, 30 years later. You said 2,000 to 4,000 to replace each one. How many do we have?
Five. We have five. We have one in each building.
One in each building, okay.
We do.
Got it. And, okay, that's going to answer my second question, is we would never, you can't consolidate and get one big one, which would be, because you have to move the, the pottery and I know you can pottery.
Oh, yeah, no. It need, yeah, it needs to be...
I can solve it to a stonework company.
It needs to be building-based. There's also so many projects done that, yeah.
I think we went over, I can solve it to a very large stonework company for a number of years and even moving within the factory. So I get that. Okay. What's the, you said 2,000 to 4,000 each, got it. What are you looking, are you looking to replace one every year for the next five years? You're looking to replace two? Just trying to understand, because we also...
I think if we, I think if we're working in the next five to seven years to replace all of the ones, North's is the oldest kiln that we have. So I'd want to see kind of go...
What is the lifespan of one?
Say again?
Lifespan of one?
Hmm, I think it depends on use, but we've gotten at least 20 years out of that kiln.
Right, and it's also something we can look at for year end too.
Yeah, okay. We'll sort of replace those little bricks inside until they break.
It could be even longer. I mean, I've been here 18 and it was here. It could be, yeah.
I don't weigh too much above this topic.
We've not bought a kiln since I've been here, except when the high school opened.
Okay.
Wow.
I believe, I know we've talked about it many times.
Yes, we have.
In the same thing, the, the, well, the clavanova that they're delivering, do you know how old it is? Couldn't we just buy that one? Do we have it? Are we looking to get a new one or...
We could. They had a surplus of a particular model that's not exactly the one that I would want to purchase outright, but they were able to say, you can have this for just a delivery and use it for five months. And I said...
I can't imagine the price difference between the surplus one and the new one, the 7,000, being that dramatic.
Probably not.
Right? When you think of over, if you think over 17 years, the cost is...
Yeah, I, I think this is a used instrument that they're loaning to us, so...
Okay, we don't want somebody else, got it, okay.
I would want to get one that has a factory warranty and...
Yeah, no, no, let's, let's put this way, there's no way that they could give you a price that would make it make sense unless they gave it to you for free, right?
Right.
No, I get it. And then we just buy a new one to have too. Because we got, as you said, I, that's fine, it's not a big deal. I'm good. Anything else? Thank you.
Oh, of course, you're welcome.
I don't know if I have...
I'm going to get the power.
Oh.
She's going to shut down.
Oh, I'll stop.
Are you clicking?
I'm not clicking.